Good afternoon. Happy Tuesday to everyone. Welcome to the Bossier City Council Agenda Meeting today to discuss the items that will be on February 6, 2018 meeting. On that date, we'll have the call to order invocation by Jeff Darby, pledge of allegiance by Mr. Montgomery, roll call, approved minutes of the 3rd of January 2018, regular meeting and dispense with the reading, approve the agenda, and any recognition of guests or ceremonial matters on that date, committed reports and unfinished business.
We have no unfinished business at that time. Anything that we have held over from the meeting from this time will be go to February 20th because of advertising requirements, and I'd already spoken to Mr. Hall about that.
Okay, thank you. So we're down to new business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for repairs to a 20-inch water main at the intersection of Evans Street and Vascom Street at a cost of $35,000. First and final reading. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Lorenz Walker, Mayor, City of Bossier City, on behalf of Bossier City, to enter into and execute a professional services agreement with Archon Information Systems LLC, DBA Civic Source for the administration of an online auction and sale of adjudicated properties program. First reading.
And this is the item. We have Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ronnie Harris is here to speak on behalf.
Please come forth, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
Members of the council. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Ronnie Harris, Director of Business Development for Civic Source. In front of you is a packet of information that contains a contract that we would like to ask for your ultimate approval. In essence, Civic Source is in the business of returning adjudicated properties back into commerce, and we do that in a process where we get information from your assessor, we look at the information to make sure the property is marketable and insurable, and we market it by posting signs, placing on our website, and having informational sessions here in your city with potential investors. The investors who decide to place a deposit, legal research is performed, notifications are all sent, everything is digitized for clear transparency, and at the end of the process, it goes to an auction, and the successful bidder will obtain title insurance for the properties that have been sold. In my previous life, I served as mayor of the city of Gretna. I did this process with one exception. I couldn't get title insurance. We literally had to give the money back to the investors. So Civic Source has married the governmental process with information technology and title insurance in order to wrap it all up and provide a service for our government clients. In your packet is a list of over 60 jurisdictions that we are presently contracted with, and this program has been around, the company Civic Source has been around for 10 years. 2018 marks our 10th year of service. We primarily started with tax sales, but the program for adjudicated sales is two and a half years old, and in that time, nearly 2,500 properties have been handled through either sales or redemptions totaling approximately $31 million. The program is working. The investors are buying the property. They can obtain financial loans and improve properties, which means increased assessments and increased taxes. In December, instead of not receiving any taxes, you will be receiving a tax check, and that's the bottom line. Should there be competitive bidding? Our process is that there is a minimum bid, which is our fees. Any competitive bidding above that is returned to the parish 100% and is considered surplus revenues. There is also the possibility of doing an adjoining landowner program, where if they sign an affidavit saying that they've maintained the property for a year, they can go to a straight negotiated sale with the parish after all of our legal research is done. So we believe that, and let me also say, we do all this at no cost to the parish. The person redeeming or the person investing pays the minimum bid, the fees that we incur. That is our business, and that's how we build our business. We also have, the surplus revenues can be treated as any surplus revenues to spend as you wish. Obviously, the parish collects for tax, other taxing authorities, and you would have to divvy that up according to law. That's it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that you have much on your agenda. I want to be thorough, but I also want to be concise and timely.
Mr. Harris, I'm looking at this list of sources, and it has a column for tax sale, a column for tax deed. Can you just talk briefly about the difference between those two? And some cities have checkmarks in both, and some are just one or the other.
That's correct.
And what would we be?
Okay.
What is this contract?
This contract is specifically for tax adjudicated properties, the sale of adjudicated properties. You'll notice in parishes, there may be listed as tax sale. Well, that's through the sheriff of the department of that parish. For municipalities, some municipalities collect their own taxes, and we do that service as well. So we do provide that service. It's a savings in manpower. It also is, has a positive effect on your budget. But actually, I'm not here today to sell that service. It's primarily the sale of adjudicated properties, and that's the contract that's before you.
Okay.
So you are located, or you're in operation in Shreveport?
No, actually, New Orleans is the base operations. I personally work out of Baton Rouge and travel the state and make presentations. But the company has been selected for six years in a row as the top workplace in the city of New Orleans by City Business, and just this past year, top workplace by the Times-Picayune. We're a very progressive company, and we're, it's an innovative company, because this has never really been done on the scale that we're speaking of, because we not only market it on the front end, we provide the title insurance on the back end.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the purchase and training of one police K-9 dog to replace one retired for medical issues. First reading. Introduce an ordinance implementing budgetary controls and otherwise providing with respect thereto. First reading. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an office manager three for the engineering department. First and final reading. Approved placement in the official minutes, the appointment of Charles Bridges reappointment as the Police Department Board Member of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board. Appointment effective March 6, 2018, and expires March 6, 2021. Approved parade permit fee waivers for the following: 2018 Parkway Band March-a-Thon, April 7, 2018; Crew of Atlas Mardi Gras Bridge Closing Ceremony, February 13, 2018; 2018 Sun City Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, February 13, 2018; 2018 Eastwood Baptist Stallion Spirit 5K and Half Mile Fun Run, February 24, 2018. And council, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments from council members? Okay. One announcement, after the agenda meeting, we are going to have a special meeting about five minutes after this agenda meeting. Due to the inclement weather condition on the 16th of January, we are having a special meeting today to look at those items that we would have addressed on that date. So this meeting stands adjourned.
All you Baptists in the room, these church, these seats up front available for you.
City Council, both City Council Agenda Meeting, special meeting for today, January 30, 2018, at 3:00 PM, well, after 3:00 PM. For the rescheduled January 16, 2018 meeting, we have the call to order invocation by Mr. Scott Irwin, pledge of allegiance by Mr. Larkin. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for each person that's here at this meeting today. Lord, we just pray for our community, Lord. We pray for those who are sick. We pray for those who are experiencing the flu, Lord, and we pray for this flu epidemic, Lord, to subside. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation and for our state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you would please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Absent.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of January 3, 2018, regular meeting, dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote, council.
Council, we have two additions to the agenda today. The first one will be item number 10 under new business. Introduce an ordinance to correct typographical errors in the legal description set forth in ordinance number 164 of 2017 regarding an aerial easement over an alley located behind 145 Evans Place subdivision of Bossier City, Louisiana. First reading.
We'll have a motion to add this item.
Make the motion. We add that.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Have a motion and a second. Anyone on the floor would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Council, the second addition that I have will be number 11 under new business. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of an assistant secretary for the city attorney to the secretary for the city attorney due to her retirement, and the hiring of an assistant secretary to fill the vacant position due to the promotion. First and final reading.
Make the motion. We add.
Now, second.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone from the floor? Please cast your vote.
Make the motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Please cast your vote. Ceremonial items today, anybody with special guests? Okay. We have committed report, the financial director, Ms. Stacey Fernandez.
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial reports for the month of December 2017. On page one, you can see that our revenues are at 100% to budget, and the portion that goes to the general fund is at 98% of budget. On page two, we have our expenditures by department, I'm sorry, by fund, and you can see our expenditures are only at 94%. On page three, the year-to-date collections of sales tax was $46,749,281, or an increase over prior year of 1.9%. On page three, we have our, I'm sorry, four, we have our Manning report. We have 666 current employees to a budget of 700, and it's a decrease of one from prior month. Had these positions been filled for the entire year, it would have been 1.247 million. Adding that back to the expenses, we still would have had a favorable outcome. And on page five, we have our water and sewer report. We're at 128% for the current month of December over prior year December. Year-to-date, we're at 129% year-over-year. We're at 97% to budget, and we're at 129% for the rolling 12 months. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare certain removable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and to authorize the donation of, to the Bossier Parish Community College's Communications and Performing Arts Department. Final reading.
Second.
And a discussion. Each item, if you would like to speak on it, you may come before us at the podium. Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $2.55 million from the 2018 general fund fund balance, and each of the respective enterprise funds, providing city services for salary and benefit increases for police, fire, and all other city employees, and an additional identical benefit shall be provided upon the funding of the municipal police and fire pension liabilities by the half-cent sales and use tax of 1982 to police, fire, and all other city employees from the said sales tax revenue and each of the respective enterprise funds providing city services. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Okay, no discussion. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Council, on behalf of the mayor and administrative team, we'd like to thank you very much for this race.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next item?
Adopt an ordinance to establish the Festival Plaza region. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, council. Orders passes.
Motion carries.
Next item?
Adopt an ordinance to restore the 1993 landscape beautification initiative instituted to foster the beautification and care of Bossier City Public Rights of Way, public easements, and publicly-owned properties. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Next item?
Adopt an ordinance repealing ordinance number two of 2010, implementing a hiring freeze, wage and salary freeze, and promotion freeze. Final reading.
Discussion.
I have a comment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I wish the council would consider eliminating that portion to come forth, the council, each time with a resolution to hire and perhaps consider waiving that for now, and only if the administration did not show that it was capable of doing that without that sort of oversight, with that resolution for each and every one, which I thought we were getting away with. That's my request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or discussion? The floor is open for your comments. I think motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second. Mr. Irwin?
I have Mr. Irwin.
Okay. Council, please cast your vote. New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for chiller replacement at the Bossier City Civic Center.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this project is $420,000. The budget is $420,000, and it's being funded by the sales tax capital improvement fund. There are three addendums. The first bid is from Burns Mechanical Contractors. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $332,000 even. The next bid is from Fitzgerald Contractors. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. Their bid is for $322,000 even. The next bid is from Ham Mechanical. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $310,000 even. The next bid is from Quality Sheep Metal. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $370,000 even. The next bid is from Reliance Plumbing Group, doing business as Reliance Mechanical Contractors. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $419,800. The next bid is from RRAC Contractors. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $310,000. The next bid is from Store Equipment. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $290,500. The next bid is from The Pain Company. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $292,900. And the last bid is from Thermotechnical Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigeration. They acknowledge the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $342,700. I ask that the council approve the reading of these bids.
Second. Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote, council. It seems rare that we have the same number. I don't know if that's happened too many times.
I don't ever see it. What happens in that case? With two bids? Just what happens?
Well, they weren't the low bidder.
I understand, but let's say they were.
Say they were? I'd have to check into the law and find out.
I was just curious. Thank you.
It's good to be curious. I wondered that, too.
Well, since you asked, I was like, you know.
All right. See, next item?
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at 2451 Hoyer Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, council. This property was condemned back on September the 21st of 2017. The owner failed to comply with our notice to either repair or demolish the structure as no permits were ever obtained. We have the mayor's approval, and then Ms. Havel's been appointed to represent the owner.
And that's 2451 Hoyer Street, right? The conventional owner is Ms. Dorothy Owens?
Good afternoon to everyone.
Good afternoon.
I want to ask you something. I know that house needed to be torn down. I was taking care of it, but I got sick and I couldn't, I wasn't going down. I live 40 miles from where that house is. But if I want to ask you all, will you give me some time? I'll tear it down and can I put a trailer there, please?
Pardon for interrupting, ma'am. I need your name and address for the repair, please.
Dorothy Owens, 908 Lewis Avenue, Benton, Louisiana.
Thank you.
And I bought that house over 20 years ago, and I let peoples who lived in it free. That's what I did, but I was able to work then at Bossier Parish School Board, and I bought it and let peoples live in it free. But it's done went down, so if y'all just give me some time, I'll tear it down and I'll put a, have a trailer put on it. put on it.
I don't, I think the time request is probably doable. The trailer part, I think that may not be. Ms. Hall? Her request regarding?
Put a trailer on it.
A trailer on her property?
To have it?
Well, she, she wanted to demolish it herself, but she was saying that in the future, come back with a trailer. I don't think that's in the ordinance.
Not going to be allowed.
I won't be able to put a trailer on it.
No, ma'am.
But I, well, can y'all give me a little time to get it?
Could you have it down in thirty days?
No, that won't, that won't be enough time for me. Please give me a little bit more time.
What is the wishes of the council?
How much time you think you need? How much time are you asking for?
About as much as you can give me.
Well?
Sixty days is normally what we.
Okay, I tried it then.
Okay.
Thank you. God bless, and y'all have a blessed afternoon.
Make the motion that we delay for sixty days.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Counsel, is this motion to proceed with demolition if it's not been?
That's correct. After sixty days, if it hadn't been done.
So Ms. Owens needs to be aware of that? Are you going to share that with her? If it's not demolished?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Please cast your vote.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at one oh five Colquitt Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Did I miss Green Street?
We started this case back in October two thousand and seventeen.
Is this Colquitt or Green? I, I missed Colq, I missed Green Street. I'm sorry. This is eighteen twenty-one Green Street.
Okay. Both are the same time. This one started in October two thousand and seventeen. The owner failed to either repair or tear down the building. This building is falling down. The roof is collapsing, falling inside. The ceiling inside is laying on the floor. It's covered in mold. There's holes rotting in the floor. There's holes in the wall. It's unfit for anyone to live in.
Is, is the owner or anybody representing the owner here?
Robin Harville was appointed to provide notice to the conventional owner, who is Willie B. Armstead. Subsequent to our notices, we were contacted by Ms. Armstead's granddaughter, Lillian Stevens, who indicated that her grandmother, Ms. Armstead, is deceased. No succession proceeding or anything has been opened, and Ms. Stevens indicated she would be present here today.
Oh, Ms. Stevens is here, okay. Good afternoon, Ms. Stevens.
Good afternoon.
Would you give your name and address, please?
Uh, Lillian Stevens, five twelve Antietam Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven oh twelve.
So you are aware that this?
Yes, I have no objections to it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Counsel, entertain the motion?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Make the motion, we proceed with demolition.
Second.
We have a motion as second to proceed with demolition. Please cast your vote. Next item?
Now, hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at one oh five Colquitt Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Okay.
Trying to get it moving.
This one was also started in October two thousand and seventeen. The owner failed to repair or tear it down to. This one has holes in the roof. The floor is rotted inside. In one of the pictures, you can see where somebody's been pulling the aluminum siding off the side of the building and taking it. It just continues to deteriorate. It gets worse and worse. This is the first one you see when you come down Colquitt, when you leave. The Margarita, over in Margaritaville is that first house, sitting on a corner.
Counsel, Robin Harville. I was appointed to attempt to locate the conventional record owner, Ms. Carla Jean Franker. We've made numerous efforts and attempts to locate Ms. Franker. She's apparently relocated out of state, but not had any response to our numerous efforts to reach out and make her aware of today's proceedings.
Okay. Is anyone here representing this owner? Okay, thank you.
Make the motion that we proceed with demolition.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey? Mr. Darby? Mr. Free?
Okay. One more, hold again. Okay.
Thank you. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer sub-basin B.C. nineteen rehabilitation project for a total of two million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars to come from the twenty-sixteen L.D.E.Q. loan, C.S. twenty-two, eleven oh three, dash, zero, two. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin? Thank you. Approved report of first and final change order for the twenty sixteen citywide concrete repairs, an increase of a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Total cost of contract with increase, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion as second. End of discussion. Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the project of Greenacre Sewer Lift Station Project, an increase of two thousand dollars. Total cost of contract with increase, three million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Comments? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the project of Big Airlines Sewer Lift Station Project for an increase of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Total cost of contract with increase, four million, nine hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for the following, twenty eighteen Baby Steps Fun Run, April twenty-first, twenty eighteen, and the twenty eighteen R.V. Curcat dash, five K, April fourteenth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to correct typographical errors in the legal description set forth in ordinance number one sixty-four of two thousand and seventeen regarding an aerial easement over an alley located behind one forty-five Evans Place subdivision of Bossier City, Louisiana. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Comments? Cast your vote, please.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of an Assistant Secretary for the City Attorney to the Secretary for the City Attorney due to her retirement and the hiring of Assistant Secretary to fill the vacant position due to the promotion. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
Any announcements? Yes, sir.
Mr. Darby, I just want to thank Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Larkin for initiating the, the ordinance to increase the salaries for all of our people and for the council's support of it. I know all of you are aware that Bossier City has been named the best city in the whole state of Louisiana to live in, and I think it's this type of governance that went a long way to make them earn that. But I really want to thank the employees because they're working, met more than two hundred people than seven years ago, and still giving the level of service that our citizens expect and are entitled to. So it's a great team effort, and I just appreciate this support of the employees who really, really deserve this.
Well, good. It gives us one more opportunity to stand and give them a congratulations.
He can remain standing. This meeting is adjourned.